All right, let's say them. Commissioner Scott, can you lead the?
I believe this is what I think. States of America.
Into the Republic of America. One nation, under God, in the visible with the.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott for that.
Chairman.
Yeah.
All right.
David, Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Welty.
Present.
And I get that.
Yes.
Mark Serbrook.
Present.
That didn't get on here. What's that? Roll call.
Call the order.
Not on the list here.
All the orders have.
All the order, yeah, okay.
All right, agenda, anybody got anything? Additional or take something off or?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
There are.
Don't need a motion.
There are two items that that you want to consider to add as late. One, we've got transit director here to talk about uh hiring of uh part-time employees. And I believe Jeff from Veterans Affairs is going to be on Zoom to talk about Veteran of the Year. If he's not, I'm comfortable.
Okay.
Considering that.
I just make it just be a no night and then to everything and nobody says it, it's anything.
I'd amend my motion to include under discussion items.
Okay.
Transit Director and Veterans in regards to Veterans of the Year.
All right.
You don't need a motion.
No, I'll just stand.
Okay.
Stand with changes, all right, public comments on agenda items only. Anybody from the room had? Uh, Mr. Supervisor? You haven't been here, I thought maybe you might.
Just trying to catch up.
Okay. Uh, there's nobody on the phone except Tom, do you guys something to say, Tom?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Oh, you didn't want to thank Commissioner Scott for taking you on a ride the other day?
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, appointments, none. Discussion items, opioid settlement. Advisory Committee recommends projects. Now Charlie, you're the head of that committee, aren't you?
Yeah, but I am, but Tim. I'm gonna let you start and then I'll see if I want to add any.
All right, so the uh opioid advisory committee uh put out RFPs. Way about two months ago uh to begin utilizing some of the opioid settlement monies. Our earmark for, you know, fact mitigation of opioid uh services. We received six. Proposals, one proposal was received late and wasn't opened and was just simply rejected as per our policy. There were three that the committee recommended funding and it would require board approval at a regular meeting next week to actually go through with them. The projects are the first from District Health Department number two. Uh, they proposed a project where uh they would. Keep the Narcan distribution boxes stocked through fiscal year twenty twenty six. So as the Narcan that's in those distribution boxes is used, they will check it periodically and make sure that there are supplies there. And ready to go for the next person. The second project was uh what they call Project See Hope. It's an educational intervention program that would be incorporated to the Ogma Heights High School. And I um forgot exactly which class they were working in, I'm sure it was the freshmen, of course, okay. Uh, and this is a, you know, fairly intense program uh that they do to help. Your kids away from uh opioid use and really any, any kind of drug use. There was one section in there where they proposed doing a. School-wide assembly and the committee felt that that those weren't particularly well, weren't particularly effective. And they would uh prefer that those funds be redirected for the rest of the program. This is a program that's already incorporated into the school out there, so they've already got the administration on board. The committee did recommend that they also approach Whitmore Prescott with the same proposal. Finally, the Catholic Human Services Project, the CERT program. Again, a project that is uh ongoing right now at my Michigan here in West Branch. The committee recommended the only funding one year of that program because. The funding for the second year is uncertain, it still might come through, but rather than commit to the second year now. The committee felt it was wise just to commit to the first year and then we'll deal with the second year about a year from now. So if the funding doesn't come through, then uh next year's funds can be used to uh offset those costs. Now, I did include on the iPads. The uh. Uh, proposals themselves, so you've got them here, that first one for the Health Department on the Narcan distribution. The total on that was two thousand hundred and fifty dollars. For their uh education program, the uh Project See Hope at twenty six thousand four sixty nine. But again, with the recommendation that the cost for the. Student-wide assembly be reallocated within that program. Last one was the. Project Hurt. I've been foiled by my own filing system here. Uh, Commissioner Welty or Serbrook, if you remember the cost of that.
Yeah, I've got it. The the Catholic? So a hundred and sixty-five thousand?
That's for the, that's for two years.
One sixty-five, six seventeen eighty-three for two years and wait until one year.
Yeah, they had the breakdown fiscal year twenty twenty-six, they're asking for fifteen thousand and then fiscal twenty-seven was a hundred and forty. It's on the last page before they start doing the cost.
Yes, the market is. Uh, so that's the proposal, the fund itself, I'm certainly can fund all of these without any problem. As we set up the RFP, we did break out what we thought the average available funds would be per year over the next, I believe, fourteen or fifteen years. Uh, as the settlement dollars are coming through and that amount was roughly two hundred and eighty thousand a year based on the current rates now. Couple of asterisks on that, the first one is there are still settlements that are in negotiation, if you will. So there could be other settlements that are added to this uh in the coming months. My concern is that with the settlements that are in play, there's nothing to prevent any of these corporations from filing bankruptcy at some point between now and fourteen years from now, which could also impact. The funds uh on hand right now are in excess of a million dollars on hand right now in this fund. So these projects definitely could be funded without any concern for running out of funds in this first year. The two projects that were not brought forward, one was another education project that Catholic Human Services proposed. They told us in the meeting that they just simply weren't ready, uh and so it was really not a, an option to consider for this year. I do expect we'll see that project coming at a future date. The second project was for a new treatment center, uh right around three quarters of a million ask on that project and that simply is too much. Or the fund right now to, to really handle. Um, other um. Problems with that particular proposal was it was a, a non-existent corporation, they haven't even filed anything as a business yet, they don't have staff. No building, no facility or anything, and it was not the intention of the committee from the notes I've taken to act as like a venture capitalist. That's not what this uh fund is about. A good project, we hope they are able to launch their business and get underway. But we just didn't feel it was the role of this particular fund to provide the startup money to do it.
In the middle of exam.
I, I think.
Right.
Are you?
That, Mr. Serbrook reminded me, there was one other proposal from the medical examiner on data collection. Um, I, I do believe in talking with uh Michigan Association of Counties, there is another source of funds for that project. So while we didn't propose doing it as part of the opioid, it's actually part of a larger nationwide program that's underway right now. But Amy is also a part of, so that worked out very well for us to have that exchange.
I just think to add a couple of things, uh Commissioner Serbrook is on this board as well, but you know, I've been very adamant since we started this. We all know we haven't been in a big rush, I mean, this has been in process for a while, we want to make sure we do this right. We want to make sure that the money that we spend is for the right reason and it's sustainable. Um, so we had taken some time with this, but our board is very strong, it has professionals in the industry. As people that have had these issues in the past and now they're, you know, moved on to help, help with other people's recoveries. So the three that we feel we'd like to move forward with, it was unanimous amongst the entire board, there was only one voting board member. Committee member that wasn't there, he was on Zoom and he supported all of them the same, the yeses were the same, the no's were the same, so. Uh, very unanimous, these people are in this, working it daily, so I feel really good about these three. And you know, like, for example, the one that uh Tim was saying, that, that three, you know, close to three quarters of a million ask. I mean, I really truly feel like we really do need some type of recovery residential service here in the county. But we can't be the, you know, the starting gates of, to finance something like all this and, you know, they would have, uh definitely have professionals working there that we would. Be able to uh, you know, know their background, uh so it's just way too fresh, but we asked these people, uh you know, to stay involved. You know, as we move forward, we're going to continue to uh have monthly meetings and, you know, I mean, there's going to be a lot more options and maybe. Person for this recovery can get involved with, uh, you know, some other people that have been involved in the industry and. You know, we just said stay involved, so we really appreciate everybody that, you know, put in the RFPs. But again, the three we accepted, um, it was unanimous amongst the entire board for uh for a green light on them. Mark, I don't know if you have any.
Yeah, the only thing I would like to add is, and Tim touched on it, was the uh, the Project See Hope, the, the Health Department. In regards to Whitmore Prescott.
Yeah.
Um, we talked about this quite extensively and hopefully we can collaborate together with the Asko County's um opioid advisory committee. And maybe do a fifty-fifty funding because that school sits right on the county line and. Um, and we're not trying to exclude Whitmore Prescott, it's just a matter of logistics, where they're located and things like that, so. Um, they're definitely going to look into that and we've gotten in with one of our members that sit on the board. Um, she's heavily involved with the Asko County Group too, so. And the plus to it is again, the Health Department also serves Asko County as well as Ogma, so we're not splitting things, so. Hopefully we can get that project going and that Whitmore Prescott as well, so. That's about all I have to answer.
Good. Guess the question will come up next week, looks like it's. Pretty much agreed upon. Okay. Let's do the three. Medical benefit contribution limit for calendar twenty twenty-six, the hard cap?
It is, now you've got the resolution that you've approved for each of the last five years, uh just reiterating the hard cap. We're required to do this by that statute every year, so it's actually baked into four of our five contracts that we're going to do hard cap. So it's really a foregone conclusion at this point, but we do have to go through the formality of actually adopting the resolution.
Um, Mark, you well aware of how the hard cap works?
I am, sort of from my previous inter time on the board.
Right.
We had it, we had it done, so.
You got any questions?
Nope.
Good.
Good.
Got it.
And my question I got is on a Narcan. Does that work on anything other than opioids?
No.
Okay. That's all it works on.
Will not work with Sentinel.
All right, I didn't know.
Yep.
They need to.
It's an opioid or opioid driven, anything that's opioid-based.
Okay, well, we'll have the question come up, both. Hard cap then. Uh, getting back. Uh, Park, the adjustments, did you get the schedule from me and I walked out the door without it? Well, but basically, we, uh, as a Parks and Rec, we, uh, at the RV Park, uh. Uh, the plan is that this winter we'll have all. All uh certain, electrical services upgraded to fifty, thirty and twenty amp services. Well, Park, so that warrants, that warrants a, a rate increase along with. Just it's been over three years that, since we had a rate increase. So we did a, uh, we did due diligence and, and found out what parks around us. Um, are charging, yeah, for daily, for weekly if they have it, uh, monthly or, or seasonal and uh. So our recommendations is, we're gonna, it's right now thirty-five dollars a lot. We're gonna, we're gonna remain thirty-five on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. And Thursday, Friday, Saturday nights goes to forty-five dollars. Um. Weekly rate was. No, monthly rate, we didn't have weekly rate, we have a monthly rate of nine hundred dollars. And then twenty-three hundred dollars for a seasonal rate. And everybody else that has seasonals. Um. Are charging for electricity. So we said, without putting meters in, we said that seventy-five dollars a month additionally would be a charge for. Electricity, some parks charge a, a stipe, a certain, like that. Some have meters and, and go by metered uh electricity. Um, I was pretty surprised, I did, I went out and did my own comparison too. Um, Rich Havlin did one and they were the same when they came back, I just went, I just went on the web and went out a little bit further. Poton Lake, Mile, things like that. Um, so I believe that we're up in that, up in a reason, uh, uh. Up around where everybody else is. I've been pretty adamant at the, at the uh meetings that we shouldn't be cheaper, we shouldn't be. Uh, competing uh, uh cheaper against the, the locals, they don't have, they have property taxes, we don't. They have income taxes, we don't. Um, if we make money, we're not paying income taxes on it, it would be. So, um, I think that's a, a, an advantage that we have, so. Um, it was, uh, it was voted on, the, the, everybody on the committee except one voted for it. We had one descending vote. Um. So, uh, this needs to come in from the commissioners to make that change.
Just like to add a couple of things there.
Sure, go ahead.
We increased the tent from twenty-five to thirty.
Oh, yeah.
And then all the, the pull-through sites, there's a few of those, we increased the rate. The fifty-seven dollars a day, or if they put, sometimes if people put campers on the same pull-through site. If they did that, then it would be a hundred dollars for that site. Sometimes they have friends that join them on the same site, so I, what, there's what, three?
A pull-through site is basically two sites.
Yes, yeah.
Just, you can pull through. So, so the, the, between the grant and the RFPs have gone out for electrical. So we think by spring will be. The rest of the park, the outside of the park will have up to fifty amp service, so. So that's, that's a pretty good, uh. Pretty good addition. I was very surprised how many didn't have sewer. Uh, or how many had very limited amounts of sewer, I was told. Because we originally went for a grant to put sewer in. And I was really surprised when I talked to some of these uh campgrounds that they don't have a sewer at the lot. And they charge considerably more for it too. They have dump stations like we do. And one park in the county offers uh seasonals. Ten free dumps.
You know, bump ups where they actually come sucker, camper.
Yeah.
With the.
Yeah, I don't have the honey dipping truck, you know? So, that's, by next week, we'll have, uh. Um. The schedule for you.
There was some concern about seasonals with the price increase, we've got a waitlist for seasonals. There's a waiting list of somebody, a couple of them because of the price increase, if they. Decide not to renew their seasonal, like I said, there's a waitlist, so I'm sure somebody will be there to take their spot. We're in line with most of the other campgrounds in the, in the county, there's a couple of them that are. Much more expensive and a, a couple of them that are less expensive, so.
Well, let's see, I got a text the other day, we already have. Hmm, maybe it's not on this text, we already have like five hundred reservations already set for next year. You know, night, night lease. So. You know? So I, you know, my point was, is when do you raise? When you, when you're filling a bar cup, that's the time to raise, raise the price, you don't wait till you, you're half full. And struggling to get people, you don't raise the price then. So. That's where we're at right now. And then we got a mobile home on the, on the. Property that needs to be replaced and. But we need to generate some money within the park system, but, you know? Okay, any questions on that? Okay, draft the exit interview policy.
Can I suggest postponing this item till when uh? The chair gets back, this is something she was particularly interested in and I'd hate to see it just.
Well, I already asked about the agenda, you should have said something.
I don't have a vote, so.
Well, you've got to say something. I don't care, you want to wait? All right, then, then that policy will exit today then, okay? Old jail and veterans memorial projects. And I guess that's, this, this, this whole resolution can go along with that. It goes with Jeff Nichols is on?
Jeff is for the Veteran of the Year.
Yeah, oh, Veterans of the Year, okay, Jeff, we'll, um. We'll move right to Veterans of the Year right now and since you're on and then. Uh, we'll probably have another question for you too that you can answer.
Oh, no problems, so, of course, it's, it's that time of year again, uh, where I need to bring the resolution for our Veteran of the Year, who is Randy Hike. A thirteen-year Army veteran, um. Very, was and used to be very active, uh, of course, his health is deteriorating a little bit. So he doesn't participate as much anymore, but a well-deserving Army veteran. Uh, has been the commander of the DAV for going on twenty-one, twenty-two years, I believe, right in there. And. Ten years on my trust fund, many years uh with the Legion, both uh post-three-seventy, just well-deserving, so. Uh, we're just bringing the resolution to you for adoption next week. So that we can designate uh November eleventh as Veteran of the Year, as Randy Hikes Day.
Okay. Anybody got any?
Of course, you know you're all invited.
Okay, thank you.
To the ceremony and we all know when, right? November eleventh at eleven o'clock.
Okay.
Eleven, eleven, eleven.
You got it.
Any questions for uh? Mr. Nichols, uh, about the. Veteran of the Year?
Thank you.
Okay, well, while you're on and we're, we started to talk about the. Veterans Memorial Projects. Uh, have? Comments about that?
No, I have not involved, been involved with it, um, I have uh Don Card. Who is on my Veterans Committee. And two other veterans who are very active uh within the community, Laura Bender and uh Ken Anderson. Uh, both of them are very active and uh looking to, looking forward to participate in the, in the, in the committee. So Don Card is kind of going to be our representative, so he'll take me appraised as things go along.
Thank you, Jeff.
Alrighty.
All right.
Yeah, the main thing I think most of my veterans are concerned with is that, that some of that memorial that's, that was previously built, the markers that are over there. The flagpole and that kind of, kind of be transferred over to the new location. Just kind of uh remembering what was done pri- previously.
Okay.
Well, who went? They wanted, they wanted left, is it?
No, they don't want it left, they want to take it.
They want to move, okay, move. We had, we had those discussions, Jeff, so I just, I just wanted to clarify whether they wanted those things moved over to the. New location that we are proposing, because we talked about leaving some of that memorial over there.
Oh, really, I didn't know that, so I haven't gotten briefed on the last meeting yet, so.
Well, we had it today at three o'clock.
Ah, that's why.
That's why, yes.
Okay, yeah, I'll probably hear about it from Don and Laura now.
You'll hear, Don wasn't. Don wasn't.
My guys there, right?
Ken and Laura were there.
Ken and Laura, Don wasn't, okay.
Yeah, I didn't see his name on the committee roster either.
He was supposed to be on the committee, maybe I forgot to tell Adana.
I was gonna say, you better contact Adana then.
I'll let her know.
I don't, I don't, I don't recall seeing his name on the roster, so.
Okay.
Well, Mark, you might as well expand on this.
All right, what we did was we initially looked at two sites and then we came up with a third site. Uh, we looked at the, where the parking lot is at Eighth and Wright Street. Then we looked at the lots on Seventh Street that the county owns. Those two lots that the county owns on Seventh Street. Just. They're nice because they've already got trees, there was grass there already, they've got some, you know, shaded areas and things. Which is, we thought it was just too small, you're going to encroach on the neighbors, there's just no parking, we talked about. Possibly looking at where the parking lot is, kitty corner from the annex and across from the church there at uh Ripley and Eighth Street. We did some preliminary. Investigation and it appears that there is no access from that parking lot to those lots on Seventh Street. Because we were concerned about parking for events if that park was to be on those two lots on Seventh Street. Then we looked at the parking lot itself across from the annex and the church there on Eighth Street at Ripley. Underutilized. It's big. We thought that would probably be the best, it wouldn't disrupt. County operations, so to speak, by taking a parking lot that is utilized, as in the one at Wright and Eighth Street. We thought we could take and probably utilize half to maybe two-thirds of that. Parking lot for the park itself and then still have remainder as parking. So we came back as a group and. It was a unanimous vote that we go ask the Board of Commissioners for permission to do the memorial at where that parking lot is located across from the annex.
The Ripley and Eighth Street.
Yeah, yep.
Two-thirds of it approximately would probably be the park and then.
Then the other third reserve for parking. Tim, do you want to add anything? Um, Tim was there for the whole thing, Charlie had a, had a meeting, he was there for the, the walk around and then had to, had a previous, yeah, meeting.
So I'll just say this, it's one thing, you know, look at the map and look at the dimensions of the lots and so on, and it's something else entirely, to actually physically go over there and. Put yourself on that lot to realize just how much space is there, it is, it's pretty amazing really how much uh exists. Uh, I'm convinced that you could easily get two rows of parking, like right along Ripley there, so, and then use the rest of that. Um, as part, maybe three rows in there, I'm not sure, but it's, it's that big. It also has the advantage of having utilities right there, obviously there's water and sewer in the uh, uh, city system and of course electricity is right there too. Uh, so that's all there, but one of the points that was made, if we were to use one of the other locations, it would almost be dependent on the old jail being demolished and converted before we could even do the project. With this lot, there's no need to wait, if uh this whole idea was to. Make this happen through donations and through fundraising uh by the veterans committees and so forth. There's no need to wait, I mean, if there were a grant to become available, we don't need to wait to have the building torn down to do it, we can proceed now. There's no need to wait. I mean, if there were a grant to become available, we don't need to wait to have the building torn down to do it. We can proceed now. Uh, as far as impact goes on parking. I can remember one time in five years when that lot was used. It was full that day, and it was a jury selection issue, but that's it. There was. Rarely do you see more than two or three cars there, and they're usually county cars.
Yeah, once we open up. Front door for an entrance, I think we'll have more people barking across. Crosses open like we used to.
Right, probably. The other thing too is with that area that we're talking about. There's a good buffer zone between neighbors. You know, if we look, we looked at that property there on Seventh Street, like I said, that was relatively small and we'd have been utilizing. Entire footprint, we'd have been right up on the property lines where that parking lot is. There isn't anything going to the south until you go across Ripley. Where the fence is for the county, there's a green space in there even between the neighbors. Probably about a twenty-five foot strip, I would say. You know, that's, that's, that they're not mowing or anything. So you've got a buffer, you know, as well, so it just. With the amount of spaces there, the fact is.
Church across the street.
Churches across the street. They still, if they utilize that parking lot for parking, which I would imagine they probably do, we're still gonna have parking spaces. You know, reserved. So it would be, you know, available for the, the church to utilize. Okay, but I mean, as far as county uses, you know. Tim said there's, when we were there, there were three county vehicles sitting there, and I don't think there was anything else that I. Very rarely do you see. Anything other than county vehicles sitting over there.
Yeah.
So like they had one thing. Um, so Ladano, you know, we pretty much had. Said Ladano would be great to be the chair. She, she said that she'd rather kind of be the quarterback, the. Person to kind of help move things along, but really doesn't want there to be a chair, so no one feels higher than the other, which. That's fine to me, but obviously we all know there needs to be a quarterback and you need to do that, so that'd be great. But I do want to say I was. Extremely impressed when we walked into that room today at three o'clock. We all had official little name.
Yes.
Names put in front of our spots, you know, we have really nice letterhead on our sheets and. I mean, what a great way to start coming out of the blocks to see, you know, she's spent some serious time on this. This is a very important. Important thing we're dealing with here, and I think having that type of professionalism moving forward as we. Look for grants and then of course talking with contractors, you know, we're gonna try to get a lot of community involvement on this. I would like this part to be just absolutely beautiful. Um, in order to do that, it's gonna take some money. You know, we know hardscape alone, causing a lot, lighting and everything, but. I think we can do it, but we're gonna really have to, you know, run a tight ship and it's starting off well, so. I just wanted to show that she did a great job that first meeting.
Hey, any other comments? Anything, Roger? Everything hunky-dory with you? Okay. I don't have anything.
Um, we did, um, have a conversation at our last committee, the whole meeting about costs associated with demolition of the old jail. And Karen was asked to just update the board on the tax revolving fund and what might be available there and some questions. I don't know. She's ready if you want to hear from her.
Sure.
Sure, okay.
We didn't bring you a chair though.
From my own.
Come on, what are you?
We are. Commissioner Scott's leaning on.
Um, so what I did was put together an account balance report for you and then just added my own wordings. To try to explain it to you. So the account balance report you're going to look at is going to have the cash and investments for the tax revolving fund on the front page. It also has the twenty-twenty-two taxes receivable underneath it, which we are finalizing the twenty-twenty-two tax sale on. October thirty-first, the final properties will go to sale. I'll be able to wrap that up and then close the twenty-two taxes and roll that into your delinquent tax revolving fund. So those two dollar amounts, cash investments is two point nine million. The twenty-twenty-five tax settlement last year. Was three point three million. And I suspect it will be higher this upcoming year. Um, since we're in an inflationary market, we have declining interest rates. We have a government shutdown. We haven't felt the full effects of. Careless yet and what that's gonna do to the market. So I suspect Tim and I were chatting, probably at least a ten percent increase. For our delinquent tax role next year. So taking that top figure of two point nine million, on the backside, if you flip it over, are the twenty-twenty-three and twenty-twenty-four taxes. Just pulling the investment figures, which mature in March, late March, early April. Given those figures today, if you added those together for just the investments only, would be one point five million. So if you add that to what you would already have in your tax revolving, you'd be at four point four million. Less the taxes, and I just use the figure from last year because I, it's an unknown of what it will be next year. You have a discretionary spending amount for capital improvements of one point one million. I want to mention too, that this past year we replaced the boilers. At a cost of three hundred forty-eight thousand seven hundred. That did come out of the revolving fund. That was the capital improvement that we made this past year. Um, I know you have RFP going out for the air handlers.
For the engineering.
Engineering for the price for the air. So.
Well, like you say, you took the twenty-five tax settlement, just. Copy it to twenty-six, but we know.
We know it's gonna be higher. Yeah, and I've had a couple of people reach out to me, Charlie and Ladana. Um, to see if perhaps the land bank could help with doing demolition of the old jail. And I did reach out to the state. Unfortunately, the twenty-twenty-six. Um, funding for land banks has been removed by legislature from this, from the state budget. However. Because we had ARPA funding in the last couple of years, there were projects across the state that did not come to fruition. So they are building up a fund balance that they are going to. Let's say how she worded it, yet to be determined. On how they are going to create dispersment and guidelines for those. Land bank projects in twenty-twenty-six. So I may have funds. But I don't know what that.
We're not even saying don't go to land bank. Are they?
Land bank, yeah, the state land bank fund balance.
Did they say what date they think that they'll be able to announce much and how they're gonna?
No, it literally says, because I reached out to say, what kind of, what does land bank funding look like for twenty-twenty-six? We've got more projects here in Oklahoma County, and it says. Um, all the grant funding was cut from the twenty-twenty-six budget by legislature. However, we are working on plans to utilize our fund balance to assist land banks. In a yet-to-be-determined way. So they're telling me nothing other than we have money, we just don't know how we're gonna spend it, how much we'll get, or what those guidelines for spending will be.
Yeah.
Is that telling you how much money they've got, or how you?
No.
How much you may get and how you could spend it.
I think this is a great example, it's called ninety-five percent of Michigan's, Michigan residents. Don't educate themselves to know at all what our budget, the money we're spending. And then you look at some of the money that's still being spent. They just passed the highest budget ever for the state of Michigan. It blow your mind, the amount of useless money being spent. And then they take away something like this, which is obviously nothing but huge for the entire state. It's just sad.
It is sad. Um, I also wanted to mention to you, I did a recap of the interest income, because we've always talked about utilizing interest income for our capital improvements. The interest income for just the tax revolving fund and the taxes receivable that we're currently collecting. Earned a hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents in the fiscal year.
Right.
So we spent that towards the boilers and then some.
Yeah.
But.
Only a hundred and fifty-three.
For just these funds.
Yeah.
The tax revolving and the twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four taxes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm, it's a hundred and fifty-three thousand.
It's really lower than it was just a few years back. When I first got on, it was.
Cause their interest rates are higher.
Cause interest rates are higher. Yeah, it was upwards of three hundred and fifty thousand.
As you heard me say earlier, we're in.
Yeah.
Inflationary market with declining interest rates, so, and the feds, I'm sure at their next meeting will most likely reduce. Yes, they're projecting another quarter, twenty-five basis points before year end.
Yeah.
So. At least in the financial reports I'm reading.
Yeah. Well, that's great, but yeah, we, we have to make sure we have settlement money of those.
You need to stay self-funded, absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, one thing I can say about knowing Karen for three years, I imagine the number that you tell us that you feel confident on, you've spent a lot of hard time and feel confident that. We should never spend more than this.
Well, absolutely not.
Right, right.
That is the most that you have available. What, what I would like to see you do is. Follow through on the RFP, because we know that there's utility savings to be had if we could get these air handlers under control, right? You talk about that frequently. So clearly that's a priority, and if we need to pay for that at the revolving fund, I would hope it would come in between two and three hundred thousand. I mean, we really don't have, we don't. So.
I hate to go.
The other thing is, it. Really rang home to me, the email that Tom sent out about consumers' energy. You know, we're talking about the jail demo.
Yeah.
Getting that generator that's sitting over there that nobody's utilizing and at least bringing it over here to power the server room. You know, because he's gotta go through this. When they shut things down, he's gotta shut our servers down. There's gonna be services that are not gonna be available. To various organizations within the county as a result of that. Um, you know, which he reiterated in that email that he sent out. So I, you know, I brought this up. More than once about getting that generator over here, because there is no generator at this building. I'm sure it's not big enough to power the whole building. But I'm sure it's got enough behind it to be able to at least keep those servers up and running.
With that being said, we should put that on our priority list.
I think it should be.
Get that moved over and hooked up.
Again, this is the max that you have available.
Yeah.
Right now, I know that the taxes next year for delinquent role is gonna be higher.
Right.
Which would reduce what you have in this figure here, and I certainly don't want you to spend all of it.
But we're sure you're maximizing on our interest too.
Yeah, doing the best.
I know she is. I've known Karen a couple of weeks now.
If you're just talking ten percent, I mean, ten percent increase, that's another. Uh, thirty-three. Three hundred, another three hundred thousand dollars.
And that was just in a conversation that Tim and I had. I really don't know.
Well, if it's not ten, it's gonna be seven or eight percent, if, if not twelve or thirteen, you know, but if it's. Any better than ten, it's probably around, yeah, seven or eight percent. It's gonna be higher. Gonna be higher.
So obviously the decisions are yours to make. These are what you have available. I'm very conservative with spending, so. You know, if we need to spend a couple hundred thousand, I'm comfortable with that, but if we're talking half a million, I'm gonna be saying, ha, 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 hold it, hold it. Okay?
I agree.
Really?
Half a million? Then I'll be saying, wait a minute, guys.
Really?
Getting too close.
Well, we're talking.
I think that might be a little too.
No, we're talking, if it, if it's ten percent higher for that tech settlement. At three hundred thousand, that's gonna come off that total available. Now you're down, now you're down to eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred plus, yeah.
With declining interest rate. Inflationary pricing.
Right.
I get it, I too, okay.
So, again, your decisions to make, you know where the numbers are.
Yeah.
Um.
Thank you.
If you start going on a spending spree. I'll be like, hold the, hold the phone, guys.
Then you'll keep us posted what you hear from the state, because that'd be a great way to possibly try to, you know.
Absolutely, and I did.
Cutting some of our costs here.
I did mention it to the, I had a land bank meeting yesterday and I did mention it to them. Um, but again, we, we have no idea what the funding will be or what those guidelines will be next year, so. I will keep you posted.
Thank you.
All right.
Do you have any other questions?
Anything, Roger?
The only thing I understand is, is we may be able to get a grant to tear the jail down or some money from the government. But we will get.
Land bank would have grant funding.
Somebody.
And then we would have to see what the guidelines are and if that's something.
But they, that money will not pay our light bill.
No, we're not.
So. We, we gotta get the light bill down.
I think your priority is the air handlers first.
I, I believe that too. That's what I'm saying is, that money, we're spending that taxpayers' money.
Paying the utility bills, yes. Demolition projects, no, that's land bank funding.
Question.
Maybe.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Karen.
Yes, you're welcome.
So with that being said, you know, I want you to keep our priorities up and move forward. Where. Where, I know we just started talking about this, but what is your plan? To move forward with us starting to figure out what we have with this chillers. I know Honeywell is who we have, but. Obviously, we can't be married to anybody. I think we need to, you know, what, what, do you have a plan yet?
Yeah, we need to get an independent engineer to look at that and tell us what exactly we're dealing with. I know we're dealing with, uh, uh, chillers that are at least ten, maybe twenty years past their end of life. I mean, they're just, they're old. And, uh, one of the concerns when they were putting the boilers in was, you know, being able to utilize equipment that's that, that old, so. Even they, they, the, the company that did the boilers couldn't give me any kind of direction at all on the chillers. It's just not what they do, so. Uh, we need to find somebody who knows that field and is gonna steer us in the right direction. If we call Honeywell, they're gonna engineer for a Honeywell. Chiller or whoever. So we want to try to make that as independent as we can. This is not in my wheelhouse by any stretch. I have no idea, once we open that can of worms, what we're gonna have. I have no clue at all. I don't know what else is connected to it, what else might be impacted. That's why we need to have somebody with that knowledge to tie all that together for us. I have no clue what we're talking about here until we get that done.
Manager for us.
You do, in, in something like that. Uh, again, it might be simple. I just have no clue. Can give no direction on that at all. So we need that guidance before we do anything. I, I don't know how much something like that would cost, um, just to get that part done. Yeah. You know, if it's, if it's under five thousand, we can do it and just move forward, but I've got a feeling it won't be.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we can go with the engineering firms that are out there, Spicer and all those. They'll have somebody in the mechanical end. We could maybe just call the state mechanical inspector's office and say, hey, you got a recommendation for us?
They'll, they'll tell us no if they're.
Yeah, I know, normally they do, but I had to have a system put in one time and the guy says, well. Let me a name.
Yeah. Uh, another tool that you have available as a commission, if you really wanted to move this along, is to waive the RFP and just say, go find somebody, get it done. You know, bring you back a price, but I'm not sure that's. The wisest approach when it comes to the, to spending. I, again, have no idea what to expect.
I must be.
RFP though, if we keep the throttle down, we still can be effective and move this.
I think so.
It's a matter of us keeping top priority, but you are the quarterback.
Right.
Right? So.
I mean, that would be my plan anyway. Get that secured and then you'll have your answer as far as what we need to do.
We need somebody to come in and engineer it outside of. Any tie that they're gonna make any money off this other than.
Right.
Yeah, this, not, we can't, we can't go with a vendor and, and do this.
But then perhaps retain that engineer to do the project management, one or two to make sure it's done right.
Right, we could, we could get prices on all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Commissioner May, you brought a good point. I agree as much as you guys hear me say constantly about the jail and stuff. I do get it. We gotta be smart. Um, I think a priority should be like you say, you know, we've got this power outage coming up, look at what it does. We have a generator. Why don't we keep the throttle down on for this chiller engineering and get prices for the generator moved over? We kind of just keep priority list high with the jail. We wait to see what Karen finds out from the state with land banks. Cause we know right now, I mean, in order for us to do that. We're gonna have to try to have some outside source of revenue, a land bank or something. With the number she gave us, we ain't gonna be able to use it, capital gains. And we're nowhere in a position right now to take fund balance money.
Right.
I mean, in a couple of years, possibly if we had to smartly, but.
Okay. I know we beat that one to death, so. Uh. What was the other thing that you wanted to add it on?
Transit Director.
Transit Director, yeah. He's just hiding back there behind him. Come on up, Tony.
Gentlemen, how we doing today?
Good.
Um, so I wanted to come up and talk to everyone. Um, about a struggle that we've been having at the transit. Um, more recently now, we had another employee, um, or just a employee go on a medical leave. Uh, for a surgery, so we're, we're short-staffed. Um, to put it lightly, I mean, this, this week has been a struggle for us, um, especially with our part-timers and then when we have a full timer out as well. I can do this week, we're stretched then. Um, so wanted to come up and talk to you guys about hiring, um. Two part-timers for the transit, not necessarily just as drivers, but as dispatchers as well, uh, cause we're also after our dispatch. Um, we only have one part-time dispatcher and two full-time dispatchers, so our part-timers work in five days a week. You know, one to six, and it's taken a toll on them. Um, so this is something that. I think we need to move forward with.
We have some candidates.
Yeah, so I have a stack of, uh, applications that I'm gonna go through, comb through and then, um, find the best suited. Yeah, so I have a stack of uh, applications that I'm gonna go through, comb through and then um, find the best suited candidates. That can fulfill both the role as a dispatcher and as a driver.
What happens when the guy comes back from surgery? Are we laying off this part time guy?
No, not necessarily, because we have been like as well, we lost a part time dispatcher back in July. Yeah, we've been short a driver um, since about March or April.
We've been making positions we've never replaced with that those.
So you plan on bringing on two part time, but eventually they'll be full time.
No.
Good. Well, you just said you're missing a driver.
Part time drivers.
Well, they're all part time drivers. But they'll stay on as part time forever now. You're not, this isn't temporary part time. This is permanent part time.
Right.
Okay. And it's budgeted? As far as how much money they got right now?
They they have a part time. Wage line in their budget, yes.
I guess. Yeah, I don't see a. Budgeted item.
Yeah.
I support this.
I do too. So what's uh, what's committee talking about uh? Twenty twenty six on the. You guys, you two are on the committee? What are you guys talking about twenty twenty six?
Quick update that. Well, we, on our agenda for today, we were at a theme the day got postponed to next week. But one of the top priorities was to talk about village because we know that's something that's gotta be talked about uh. Cause we know our revenue lines all the way around are down. So. Um, next. Next Thursday, that will be one of our top priorities and talks. But I mean, it's pretty much inevitable as much as I I hate to ask the county residents for anything more. I just said this. Past Tuesday at a Mills Township meeting, I understand you guys paying tax, 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 but there are certain very important entities of our county. And the Ooma County Public Transit is one of those and state federal, state funding down, federal funding down, no village. I mean, either we decide to go for a village or if we don't decide to do that, I mean, ultimately for the sustainability of the transit, I think we'd have to cut services. There's no other, no other way about it. So. Next Thursday would be a very important meeting and we'll can give you more information on it after that.
Okay. Roger, any questions?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
I had a couple of good part time employees for us.
There was no other items. Commissioners, want to make a comment about anything? Roger, you got anything to say?
Nope.
Nothing?
Charlie?
Reports are next week and we covered a few little things, so good.
Okay. Mark?
I'm fine. I'm good.
You good, dude?
Good.
Well, most all the stuff uh, we talked about is all. Committee. Many uh, based stuff, so. I go, I usually always go with the committees. You know, that's why I like it to work, so. Okay. I would comment.
I would like to just say one thing, just to reiterate what. Commissioner Wilson said about the OBA settlement committee. Those people are the subject matter experts. I mean, they, there was a subcommittee. Of our committee and they were. tirelessly, they worked hours and hours and hours reviewing these proposals, you know, number one, they. They're the ones that basically set the parameters for the proposal. You know, and I mean, my hat's off to those people. My God, they just fantastic group, you know? I can't say enough good things about them. I really can't. I'm just so impressed with, you know, the hard work that they put into it and continue to do and I. Again, I'm just so thankful that we have those people to be able to guide us. Because we, I think we'd have been totally lost without their their expertise.
Just to add to that, I'm near exactly what Commissioner Shriver said, but I'd also like to thank Tim. I've thanked him a number of times over this. He has also done a great job, um, you know, helping such to set up RFPs, but also helping set the pace for meetings and everything else, so.
I wasn't trying to take away anything, Tim, I'm sorry.
No, no, I know you.
I wasn't trying to slight you.
Okay. Any other comment from the commissioners? I'll open this up. Do you break anything? They usually do. I mean.
No, thank you.
Okay, come on, Joe. So public comment from the room? Anybody in the room? Ken? We've been talking about spending a lot of money here and that's right up. On your angle here.
You know, as far as the the O O B L development. You know, it's been a long time. I would feel comfortable, um, a lot of that money going back into the EMS. And our coroner services because that's where it actually took the money out of our taxpayers. Is for the um, overdose runs, the coroner reports on overdose, all those runs. Now, if we had money to go back into someplace, I would like to see the money go back into the EMS. Cause that's what really took it out of us in the hospital.
Sometime when you get some time, talk with Tim. And he'll give you an overview of what money can be spent for what.
Yeah, I'm just.
Yeah, we got, we got, we got lots of great ideas, but I don't, we can't always spend it on it, our ideas. Anybody else got any public comment?
You gotta look for somebody to do general contracting Barton Malo Company.
Barton Malo, Malo.
Big time.
Yeah.
I've worked with them. They're. Very professional, big time. General contracting, basically everything.
Location in bad ex, which probably won't be too far.
No, we got people, vocal people work for them.
Yeah, yeah, we do.
Anybody else? Okay, anybody on the phone like to? Throw a comment, uh? Public comment, just wave your wave your hand or something like that. We'll hear it. Nothing? Okay. All right, your turn now.
I was gonna do a gen. Your turn.
Okay, your turn.
Have a good night, everybody.
Great job.